I'd like to call the City of Oak Harbor Planning Commission Regular Meeting to Order, February 27, 2018. Our new starting time this evening at 6:30 PM. And going forward, it will hopefully be 6:30 PM. The first item, I would like to announce that Commissioners Eric Mann and Kevin Ostenson have submitted their resignations. And we'll do the roll call now. All the Commissioners are present, which constitutes a call. Second item on the agenda, approval of the minutes, December 12, 2017.
I move that we approve the minutes from the meeting of December 12, 2017.
Now you second it.
Okay. You moved and seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
I abstain.
It's approved. As we do in all meetings, this is the time for public comment. We will entertain any public comment for items not otherwise on the agenda for the first 15 minutes of the planning commission meeting. Seeing no takers, I'll close that part of our meeting. Item four are public hearings. The first item on our public hearings agenda is the Historic Preservation Ordinance. Planner Ray Riedenberg has this for us this evening.
Thank you, members of the planning commission. We have spoken about this previously a little bit, but I am going to go through a little bit of background again since it has been a couple of months since we talked about it last. This is a discussion of our Historic Preservation Ordinance and the process that we're going to go through to do that. Just as a little background, the mayor's office received requests from the Oak Harbor Main Street Association that the city pursue this process for the purposes of assisting local property owners with grants and other types of assistance for private property within the city. We have a number of benefits to being a CLG. We have that little handout that we went through previously. I'm not going to read through the whole thing, but like I stated previously, there are a number of grants, technical assistance and things like that, that property owners can apply for to help them with rehabilitation of properties, maintaining the architectural significance of some historic properties as well. Local governments within the state can apply for this CLG certification with the State Department of Archaeology and Historic Preservation. Once you go through that process, you get registered and you're then determined to be a certified local government. That's the application process. There's three steps towards becoming a CLG. The first step is the adoption of Historic Preservation Ordinance, and that's why we're here today. DAP has provided a model ordinance which can be modified. A member of our staff, Gideon Kaufman, has been working diligently on that. It's been handed off to me so that we can move it forward through the planning commission and city council for approval. There is a copy of that draft ordinance in your packet there, so if you had a chance to review it, we'll talk a little bit about tonight. There's a copy of the Historic Preservation Ordinance. That's what the official title is. That's the draft ordinance right there. Just some highlights, the organization of how this all works. Within that code are found these sections. The Purpose Statement, the short title, definitions, a section on Historic Commission, the Register of Historic Places, Review of Changes to the Historic Register Places, and Review and Monitoring of Properties for Special Tax Valuation. Now, the code creates the Historic Commission. It also creates a Register of Historic Places. Within that, the Historic Commission will administer that registry and also administer the review of the changes, any requested changes to Historic Register Places, and then also review and monitoring of properties for the special tax valuation. So when we go into the code there, I want to make sure that you understand that this is a discussion back and forth. If you have any questions about this, please do not hesitate to let me know. Again, those sections that I discussed previously, within the code, the Historic Commission is what's being created here, the primary kind of meat and potatoes of this ordinance. And what the Historic Commission will do is it'll be a member, or excuse me, seven members as provided in this code. And the members of the, or the composition of the commission, they need to have a demonstrated interest and competence in Historic Preservation and the ability to provide impartial decisions. So what we're looking at there is we're looking at people who are interested in Historic Preservation, architecture, archaeology, things like that. That will be the composition of the commission itself. The terms range between two and four years to start. What happens there is that's kind of a staggered, staggered start from the beginning so that you have Commissioners being, coming up for new positions every few years rather than just having seven new positions and then seven new positions down the way. So it staggers them a little bit. The major responsibility of the Historic Preservation Commission is to identify and actively encourage the conservation of city historic resources by initiating and maintaining a register of historic places and reviewing proposed changes to register properties. That's what it says right there in the code. And what that's saying is, is the city is going to initiate a register of historic places, and that will be falling on staff. And what will happen there is we will go through and find out some of those properties or all of those properties within the city that have some sort of historic significance. There will be a list put together. And then from that list, the people or the property owners that are on that list of properties will be able to apply to the city to get on to the, excuse me, on to the Register of Historic Places, which then gives them the ability to go for some of these grants and some of the technical services that go along with that. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to turn this over to Gideon and to our Main Street Coordinator or Director, and they're going to talk to you a little bit more about some of those details, but this is just kind of a 30,000-foot overview on that. So the key thing to consider here as far as the properties on the Historic Register is it is strictly voluntary. This isn't something that we're going to go out to property owners and say, hey, you're on the Historic Register, you have to maintain this property in a certain way. It's strictly voluntary. That property owner can apply to be on the register, and they can also apply to be removed from the register. And so that can happen at any time as well. This is a very important thing, I think, to make clear, is that we're not compelling anybody to do this. And I think that's important for property owners and for people who are concerned about a little bit of government overreach in that situation. So I think that's important to note. Are there any questions so far? No, okay. And then finally, we talk about the review and monitoring of properties for special tax valuation. There will be certain tax benefits for being on the Historic Register, and that will be something that the commission will be able to oversee and deal with as well. So that's going to be one of those things that, when you go through the full code here, you can see the criteria that are required to be on that, the criteria that you have to be, excuse me, the criteria that are on there to be as a part of the Historic Register and then also to be considered for those tax credits. So if there are not any other questions, I'm going to step away from the mic here and see if our other two assistants here want to speak up on it, have a question.
I don't know if this is the time or if you want me to wait until they have a chance to talk, but I do have some questions about just some of the general ideas that are in here.
Sure.
Should I ask them now?
Go ahead.
Okay. So you had mentioned that the members have to be residents of the City of Oak Harbor.
Yeah.
We have people who live outside the city that own businesses, that own maybe substantial numbers of properties within the city, some of which may, you know, be historic properties, but we're not going to allow them to, I mean, do we want to consider including the option for them to be in, just like we did with some of the other boards and commissions in the city?
I think that's very reasonable. As we discussed in the pre-meeting there, it's difficult sometimes to fill some of these commissions, so if somebody has a vested interest in the city, I don't see any reason that we should turn them away, honestly.
And that brings up the other thing of, you know, some of the definitions here, I think it's great, I'm just not sure about whether, what exactly is meant by some of the definitions? For example, a demonstrated interest and competence in Historic Preservation. What determines a demonstrated interest and competence? I mean, I have an interest and competence in it, maybe, but how do I demonstrate that I've got that interest and competence?
Right. Yeah, and that's one of those things that we'll know it when we see it kind of thing, but there are some guidelines in the DAP website, and they can, they can help guide some of that. When you, when you apply to become a member of the Commissioner, Commission, you kind of give a resume or, you know, a CV, if you will, to say, hey, you know, I am interested in this, these are my qualifications, no, I'm not an architect, but, you know, I have an interest in these sorts of things. And I think that's one of those things that we can vet as part of the process of application to the commission itself.
So then that also gets into the next definition that I've got a question about, which is identifying, evaluating, two professionals who have experience in identifying, evaluating, and protecting historic resources. You know, we may have perfectly competent architects or contractors who are experienced in identifying and evaluating historic resources, but maybe not protecting them. Are we excluding them because we use the word "and" instead of "or," or "and slash" or?
That might be, and maybe that's something that we need to revise on there to be a little bit intentionally vague, if you will, to allow for that.
Right. That's just my main concern is, you know, it's not that big of a city, and this is a fairly specific requirement.
Sure.
If I could just add one thing, and I'm not sure whether, Hal, you noticed this or not, on the residency requirement, which you picked up on in 1850-0401, there is an exception to that which is provided in that same section, but in 2B at the top of page 19 of your packet, last sentence. Furthermore, exception to the residency requirement of commission members may be granted by the mayor and council in order to obtain representatives from these disciplines. So there is a recognition that because this is a specialized list of people to participate on the commission that we might need to vary that residency requirement. And just as a footnote, unless I'm mistaken, the makeup of the commission is also part of the model code that we received from DAP. So we did not create this list of requirements. This is the type of ordinance that we're expected to adopt.
And that paragraph that, or that sentence you referenced, I took to apply only to the two professionals because it was in paragraph B.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, that's true. It applies just to those two professionals, so we don't have the same latitude yet in number one.
So then my only other thing was on paragraph 1850-40, I'm lost here. Page eight out of 18 on the bottom left corner, item four in parentheses, approve or deny applications for special valuation is one of the functions of the board. Is there an appeals process? You know, if somebody puts in an application for special valuation and they're denied, is there any kind of appeals process, or is that something that will get sorted out when they write their bylaws and rules?
There is actually an appeal process, if I remember correctly, and I believe that it's in, I thought it was in 070, but, oh, here it is. I'm sorry, it's the very last section, so it is, it is in 070, very last page, page 18 of 18 of the draft, or page 31 of your packet, and it's number five.
Oh, yeah.
Any decision of the commission acting on any application for classification as historic property eligible for special valuation may be appealed to Island County Superior Court.
So they have to go to court to appeal it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, that's all I've got.
What I found in looking at the code, I referenced chapter 84.26 of the RCW, and it's pretty much cookie cutter, you know, from what's in there. I've dealt with these preservation and historic place commissions before. Get ready, because it's a long process. I mean, literally a long process, and I think they're going to have to sort out their goals and their meetings and all that, because a lot of times, what I've found is that, that was the concerning part that I had on this, was I'm for the historic properties preservation list, but sometimes when the applications come in, they want to make improvements, they have to submit those improvements to the board. The board doesn't always meet that frequently because it just doesn't. And so it can be very time-consuming to get a response. It took me 54 days to get it okay to replace raised panel doors, and it had the same raised panel door before, but I couldn't get the approval to move forward, so, and that's part of dealing with it because that's their rules. But also, once they become historic and they do apply for grants and they receive grants to make the improvements, then there's a timeline. They have to maintain them and they can't change them. But that'll, again, that'll be part of the rules and regulations. Don't get me wrong, I'm not against this at all, it's just, there's just a lot of loose ends that still have to be addressed. But you have to have the ordinance in place before they can start addressing that. But I did see the definitions, a lot of the same stuff is in the state code already, including the appeals process, so.
Shall we open the meeting now or wait until the presentation's quite, the other toes?
I would think that the presentation of the Main Street Association and any comments that Gideon might have could be in, as part of public comment, I would think, yeah.
So open the hearing now?
Yeah.
Thank you, Ray, for totally confusing me. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing for the item and welcome any comments from the public concerning this Historic Preservation Ordinance.
Matthew Williams, Executive Director of Oak Harbor Main Street Association. So as the new director still, I'm still three and a half months into this, talking with Gideon, talking with Ray, talking with building owners of historic downtown Oak Harbor, floating this idea of a CLG, of a certified local government by them, there's a lot of, there's a lot of interest from the building owners themselves. I think one important aspect of this is that it's not just renovating a building, it's renovating it with the materials that are supposed to be used in that type of renovation. It's not just going to Home Depot and picking out 2x4s and throwing it in there and making it happen. It's by the guidelines, by the book, making it look like what it used to back in 1890, right? Restoring the Maston's Building back to what it looked like back then. The Ernst Apartments Building, restoring it back to what it looked like back then. And one thing that we're looking at in the Oak Harbor Main Street Association is celebrating that history digitally. So if we can have the visual of the building itself, and then we can digitally carry someone through time of, yeah, this is what it looked like, and it looks like that today, but this is what it's been throughout history, then I think it creates an appeal downtown, and it increases the foot traffic downtown, which is really what Oak Harbor Main Street Association is about, is increasing the foot traffic, increasing the economic vitality of downtown. And it is a process, and it is a stringent process to move forward in anything historic preservation. But if we don't do that process, then when my children come up here, then they won't have anything to look back on and say, that's what it looked like back in 200 years ago, right? So we have to start that process at some point and sometime to make sure that that historic preservation is there for not just us, but for future generations, and I think this would be the first step in ensuring that that happens. And I'm welcoming any questions as well.
Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
I've got one question. Have they got a partial list, or have they done, you know, some scouting of the city to find specific locations already?
So the ordinance is it has to be 50 years or older. The building has to be 50 years older. And I've got three building owners, there's nothing official signed on paper or anything that someone's going to participate, but just from conversation from these building owners, there is a vested interest in establishing this CLG. And I think Nick Van from DAP, from the Department of Archaeology and Historic Preservation, has previously came down and did a survey of buildings of downtown Oak Harbor.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have any other takers at this time?
Does that, unless I have any questions?
Do you have any specifics?
No other comment, I can, I'll close the, okay, I'll close the hearing then, and are we prepared to form the motion here?
I'd like to, I'd like to make sure that whatever we send forward has the flexibility in the document to allow business or building owners who aren't residents included.
Are you referring to members of the commission?
Yes.
Not being residents? Would you, would you have an upper limit of the number of non-resident members? That's something that we did, I think, with the planning commission as well, to, so that you don't have a majority of non-residents. Is that a concern to you, or do you have a number that you would propose?
I don't.
Okay.
Excuse me, I would propose three, or four of the three would have to be residents within the City of Oak Harbor.
Okay.
Just like it is on some of the other commissions.
Is that acceptable to you, Hal?
Well, I know that when we were looking at this before, we talked about trying to keep it consistent across the different commissions in the city, so maybe we need to reference exactly what they're saying in some of the other commissions as far as the membership goes. And I don't know that off the top of my head. I'm looking at Steve.
So the other boards and commissions that have any sort of residency discussion in them do say that at least four out of the seven need to be residents, the other three may be residents or may own a business within city limits. That's the requirement for planning commission, I think that's also the requirement for the salary commission, as I recall. I don't think we have residency requirements that I can recall on the other boards and commissions, but I do remember that those are in place. And so what you might consider would be similar language, although the challenging part here, I guess, is if the mayor and council are going to use one or two of the waivers granted to them by section 2B to get the identified professionals onto the commission by using up to two of the non-resident requirements, might be a little challenging to weave those pieces together. So I think the easiest thing to do would be to say in 0401, picking up on the last line of that section, commission shall be appointed by the mayor and approved by the council, and at least four members shall be residents of the City of Oak Harbor except provided in subsection 2B below. Now, that won't work either, because then we have it, we already have the 2B below. I think what we could do, if the commission wanted this, is we could accept your concept. You could make, you could make a motion telling us what it is that you wanted in terms of a concept, and we could work out the language and put it in there on our way to the council. That would work. Or if you were uncomfortable with that, we could bring it back to you next month.
One question I've got with that, say, out of the five people, because there's seven people on the board, two of them are professionals that can be waived by the mayor. Out of the five people, maybe three of the two for the five people should be residents of the City of Oak Harbor minus the professionals. Something like that? Does that make sense, Hal?
Yeah, it does to me, but it might open it up to too many non-residents.
I think you're muddying the waters.
Is it?
I think you're really muddying the waters.
Something to consider as well.
If this is approved as it's stated, wouldn't that be one of the priorities of the commission that are setting up their priorities and their rules, that so many members are this instead of us trying to take this? Because my concern is the mayor and city council, you know, they can amend that or override it. Okay, so let's not step on their toes. Let them do their job, and then let the commission disappointed do their job.
So if we were to, looking at the suggested recommended motion, if we were to say, you know, that with consideration for expanding membership to include more non-residents, would that be too confusing? And that way you guys can sort it all out?
What we could do-
We don't need to micromanage the language?
Yes, Hal, what we could do is take that concept, we could certainly share the substance of this conversation with the council, and we could craft language that we think meets your intent, and the council could consider that. But I think what would be important, obviously, would be for all four of you to, or at least the majority of the four of you, to support that idea.
I could, I could support the idea. I just, I just feel awkward in trying to dictate something to the council where they have the ability to appoint and overrule that or override it.
Well, they have a right to do that anyway.
Yeah.
I mean, whatever we say, they could certainly override.
Remember, all we are is a recommendation body, anyway. So any recommendation we give, they can sit there, take or throw away.
Well, I've already made my comment, you know, before, that, you know, I think that my own personal view is that they, the people need to have a vested interest in the city, okay, in what they're doing, and if you own the property that's being considered historic or they own historic property in the city, yes, they've got a vested interest. But I worry that these boards and commissions will start to be loaded up with people that are outside the city limits.
I agree.
And that's my big concern. You know, we just, that's, I can, I can support your motion or that concept, but my big concern is, is that, you know, that outside influences can find their way onto the board or onto these commissions that impact our city, and yet they have no vested interest. That's my concern.
And one thing I was going to mention as well, is we do have the city council workshop coming up on this.
Right.
So they will be having one look at it with any changes that you might have, and then moving it forward from there, too. So there is a little bit of massaging that we can do between now and then, and we can bring up your concerns at the workshop and say, look, you know, they're concerned about the number of people that don't live in the city limits, you know, where do we want to go with that?
So how do we form the motion?
I'll give it my best shot.
Okay.
I move to recommend adoption of ordinance number 1822 to the City Council, adding Chapter 1850 Historic Preservation to Title 18 Planning of the Oak Harbor Municipal Code with additional consideration to considering non-resident land or property owners to the membership.
That'll, that'll get us in the ballpark.
Thank you.
I have a motion. I have a second.
I'll second it.
Motion is seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Sorry about that.
Motion's approved.
I don't think it's going to be that.
The second item this evening is also a public hearing. It's the 2018 Comprehensive Plan Amendments Docket. And Senior Planner Kat Kamak will take us through this.
Good evening, Kat Kamak, Senior Planner. So this is the 2018 Comprehensive Plan Amendment Docket. Since we missed our January meeting, we're off schedule a little bit by one meeting, but I think we can still make it to the City Council in March and move this forward. There is a slight change since you have, since you received the packet in terms of a recommendation on the docket, but I'll go through that and provide you some information on that. So as you know, the state limits cities to amending their comprehensive plan only once a year. And so that's why we have this process of going through the docket system. It's understandable because, you know, long-range plans are, you know, you have your eyes on the horizon and you want to look at it from a long-range perspective, and you shouldn't be going in and changing things so often that you can't get to implementation. So I think that's why the state says you can only do it once, once a year. And then they also have cycles for amending elements within the comprehensive plan with the six and seven-year cycle. So the docket that's going forward for this year, a lot of items from last year's docket are kind of spilling over just because of the scale of the project. And one of them is the Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan. We went through, if the commission remembers, we went, we had a joint workshop with the City Council. We looked at the goals and policies back in October, and we're continuing to work on that. I have a brief update on that as one of our agenda items, so I'll provide that, some information on that. But we'll be working on that in 2018. The economic development element, a couple of policies were added in 2017 that amended that element, but we wanted to still keep it open because we did have a task force that convened to come up with some suggestions on economic development policies, some of which we, is contained in the comprehensive plan, but we wanted to just keep it open just to see if there are things that come up during the year that needs to be changed and we could do that. The JPA/UGA resizing, now this is the one that when we sent the reports out in January, we originally recommended removing this item from our docket because the county did so. Because as you know, the JPA line and the UGA is not ours to amend. We have to work with the county in order to do that. But considering, just like the economic development element, that there are some moving elements in this piece, and, you know, it's very difficult to remove this and still tell the council or the commission that we can continue to discuss the issue. It doesn't seem to match up. So it doesn't hurt to have it on the docket. The state doesn't say, "Whatever you have on your docket, you must act on." You know, you can get to the end of the year and say, "Okay, we've had it. The issues haven't come up. We don't have really any issues, so we can drop it off the docket going into next year." So there's no real harm in keeping this item on the docket this year. So we're recommending, based on what has happened since the report went to Planning Commission back in January, there have been few workshops at the City Council regarding this, and the conversation seems to be continuing on this. We felt that it doesn't hurt to have it on the agenda, so we're changing our recommendation from what you have on the report. And I have a motion at the very end to try and keep this included in our 2018 docket. Housing element, this has been a hot topic for the City Council and the Planning Commission over the last four to six months. The county is updating their housing element as well. And housing is a countywide issue, and the challenges that the county faces are slightly different than the challenges that the city faces. But coordinating with them will be really helpful in trying to solve our problems or issues related to housing. So we are recommending opening that element this year and working with the county on that and then seeing how some of those policies will fit into our housing element. So we're recommending that be opened this year as well. Capital Improvements Plan is updated annually. We update schedules and numbers on that. It's not required to be updated annually, but we do that just to keep track of all the projects and find opportunities where we can either add projects if there are grants available and things like that. So it's good to just have it on the docket and let everybody know that we're working on that. So that is the 2018 docket that's in front of you. Again, we'll have the hearing here, the process for generally comprehensive plan amendments is we have a hearing until the docket is approved by the City Council. And then throughout the summer, we work on it. We usually have, as you know, as the Planning Commission knows, we have the comprehensive plan on every meeting, and we discuss issues related to that. So we'll go through all of that this year. And of course, we get to November and December, it'll be time to make decisions on some of them, and we can decide at that time which ones move forward and which ones don't. So considering the change that I just mentioned about having the JPA/UGA boundary changes, I recommend, staff recommends that we have a motion to move that docket forward with all the elements and not remove anything from the docket. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
No questions? Hal?
I don't have any questions, but I do want to applaud you for keeping the JPA/UGA in there. I think that that's really important to do, so thank you.
And the only thing I want to say with the JPA/UGA boundary changes, I'm concerned about that being fast-forwarded again, just like it was tried to before, where this body was bypassed, because that's something I think that should sit there and be done through the standard procedures that should be gone, not fast-moving, fast-tracked, to sit there and get it done overnight, which I know is an exaggeration, but still, I think that should be something looked at very closely before it's just fast-tracked on to be approved.
Any comments? At this time, I think we should open the public hearing again. Open the public hearing on the 2018 Comprehensive Plan Amendments Docket. Do I have any takers from the audience here this evening to address this issue? Seeing none, I will now close the public hearing. And at this time, if we're prepared to make a motion, I would like to make a motion.
I move to recommend that the City Council adopt the 2018 Comprehensive Plan Amendment Docket as presented.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Actually, can I interject? As opposed to as presented, can, can you read the, that would be the motion to recommend? Because as presented, we have without the UGA.
And I move, I move to recommend forwarding the proposed docket that includes park plan update, economic development element, housing element, JPA/UGA boundary changes, and the capital improvement plan updates to the City Council for approval.
Hal, I have a motion.
I second it.
Hal seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item C on our agenda this evening is a public meeting. It's the update to the park plan, and once again, Senior Planner Kat Kamak will take us through this.
Thank you very much. I have a short presentation just to get you all up to speed on the Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan. If you remember, we had a survey out to the public. We didn't, when we did the plan in 2007, we had a survey, and the plan recommends kind of conducting a similar survey with, so that we can kind of compare results as we're going forward. And so we did that with minor modifications. We didn't get as many responses as we did in 2007, but we did get about 335 to 340 responses, which is fairly good. But in 2007, we had about 550, I think. So a little drop in participation, but nevertheless, pretty good turnout. So what I thought is I'd quickly touch upon some of the highlights of the survey. There's a lot of data there, and we could view it. We'll have the, all the results of the survey in the park plan, so people can look at the data and look at it and determine things for themselves. I just picked a few things that, to highlight for the commission. So we, we've had the survey out for six-plus months, and there's approximately 330 responses. Fifty-eight percent of them were between the ages of 36 and 65, and 16.5% above 65. That constituted the majority of the ages of the respondents. This is an interesting one. Seventy-eight percent have lived in Oak Harbor for more than five years. Usually, you know, we always get the comment that, you know, we're a transitory community. We have a lot of Navy folks going in and out. But what this says is people who have lived here for a long time are the ones that have responded to the survey. So they've been in the community, they've used the parks, they know the facilities, therefore, we're getting a solid feedback from them. We broke the city into quadrants just to see where we're getting most of our respondents from. Twenty-seven percent from the southwest quadrant and 18% from the northeast quadrant. So it was kind of a fairly equal display, but the southwest quadrant returned most of the surveys. Community parks are used a lot in the city. That's more than neighborhood parks. Sixty percent of them use that. And trail use, and this is similar to what came in 2007, people want trails. They use them a lot. And as you can see, walking and jogging is the most popular activity, followed by playground and bike, and biking. So those are that demographic's most popular activity. Forty percent of the respondents thought that the parks are in fair condition. Forty-nine would like to see more covered shelter. Now, this is a question that we asked because this is the Northwest, it rains a lot. We had a comment, we had comments from the 2007 about that, about facilities, about extending recreation hours and having covered facilities. So we asked that question, and it seems like a lot of people are interested in that. Now, covered facilities can mean a lot of things. It could be for recreation, it could be for passive recreation, picnics and so on. But it seems like a lot of people want to see more of that in our parks. We asked about all the facilities that they'd like to see and rank them. Splash Park, of course, received the most number-one ranking, but we had like a rating, we had like five, a scale of five. So even though Splash Park got the most number-one, if you add up all the responses, trails and indoor facilities ranked higher than the Splash Park. So replacing aging playground equipment ranked highest for spending funds, so we asked them, you know, "Where would you like to see money spent?" And that's, that was the number-one, the highest ranked. And we recognize that. We recognize our infrastructure needs to be replaced in a lot of parks. Unfortunately, we can't, at least in the existing parks, we can't use like neighborhood impact fees because they are related to new development. That's, new developments are what are paying the impact fees. So we have to come up with some other funding source to replace our existing playground equipment. We usually go after grants and stuff like that, but everybody's competing for those kind of grants, every city is, so they are more challenging to come by. But that's, that's one of the most highest activity, and so that's something that definitely we need to look at moving forward. We had a box for other comments in the survey, and reading through those comments, it's always a kind of fun comment section. But in this time's survey, we had, I want to say, at least 80% of them had something to say either about the windmill or the RV park. So, and these are, again, you know, going back to the demographics, these are people that have lived in the community for five-plus years, so they've seen the changes in the community and have seen the things that happened with the city. So that's two of the main comments that they were making. So changes moving forward, what are some of the changes that we're doing to our goals and policies, you know, through that joint workshop? Some of the, just what are the things that we've done? There were a lot of comments about combining goals. You know, we have lengthy goals, and we have parks goals, recreation goals, and open space goals. And there was a lot of comments on how some of the statements are repeated. As I mentioned, goals and policies in the 2007 plan came from the compilation of all the other plans prior to that. And so you have a lot of repeat statements over the years that never, that could have been consolidated. And so this year, we did have some comments on that, so we'll be consolidating some of those statements. There were some goals that were accomplished and completed, so talked about removing those from, removing those from the list. Deleted some obsolete goals, and I'll go over some of them. Also moved and re-categorized some statements. So we had some Marina-type goals and statements under parks, and, you know, they wanted it under recreation because it's a recreational facility. So there's some moving and re-categorization comments that were made, so we'll do that. And of course, a few goals were added in the process as well. What are some of the notable ones? Now, there is, this is just the ones that we kind of changed. This is not the comprehensive list. There are a lot of things in the goals and plans that have remained in place. But some of the notable changes are, of course, continue to improve the appearance of the waterfront trail. You know, we heard at that joint meeting, everybody understands the importance of the waterfront trail and its importance to the community, so they wanted to kind of improve that and also specifically improve the linkage between the Marina and downtown. There were statements made to remove references to the green belt concept. Again, this is a carryover from an older plan, and those are not the best concept from a planning standpoint. And so comments were made to remove that. Remove statements on open space trust and fund concept. That was, again, I think, a concept carried over from the '90s. We all know that operating a land trust is a big task. There are organizations specifically incorporated to do that with very specific skills, takes a lot of resources, and the city may not be in the best position to run such a land trust. And so these are best left to not-for-profit organizations. So we've removed statements about the city trying to be in that. We can always support these land trusts and work with them, but I think the statements in there were for the city to create a land trust, and that's, that's a difficult thing to do. There were comments about adding online maps to either the website or somehow make them available online, so we'll add some goals regarding that. Include a potential, there were some comments made about Flintstone Park and trying to make sure we capture the intent of trying to incorporate the Marina at some point. Now, this was an idea and discussion that was, that happened about three or four years ago in terms of what should we do with Flintstone Park? You know, our Marina is leased with the- You know, our Marina is leased with the, with DNR. Is there a way we can kind of move that closer to downtown? So, there was a discussion about four, five years exploring that option. And there's a lot of things that need to be done, you know, dredging and there's a lot of costs associated with that. But the council and the commission, Planning Commission and the Park Board at that joint meeting felt that we should capture that idea and if at all possible, if there's an opportunity, we should try to make that happen. So, we're going to include a statement trying to capture that idea and see if there's an opportunity that develops in the future. Talked a little bit about the RV park at the joint meeting as well, and I think everybody understood that the city's not again in the best position to provide for RV parks, but at least we can support somebody's venture to have an RV park. So, we'll be changing the role to support a facility and not be in the, in the position of actually operating that. There are challenges to, for a public agency to operate RV parks. It's really difficult to run it like a private RV park just because private RV parks can make a lot of rules and regulations that public agencies cannot. And so, there are just some inherent challenges in that and we're better off being in the supportive role on that. There were some comments made about adding vendors and performances to parks. We could do that. And of course, acquisition of land for future parks. That was a comment that was made at the, at the joint meeting on the importance of trying to still expand our park resources. So, those are some of the notable changes in the, in the goals and policy section. So, just a quick note, population-wise, all our plans are dependent on population. In 2009, when we did the update to the parks plan, we had statements in there. So, in 2007, the population was twenty-two thousand, six hundred and ninety. And we did a ten-year projection at that time and we predicted in ten years it will be twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and three. And so, with that ten-year projection, you, we calculated the level of service. Do we have enough basketball courts? Do we have enough soccer fields and so on? So, all our level of service analysis was based on that ten-year projection. Now, the current update with the OFM, 2017, our population is twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and forty. It is nowhere near the twenty-seven thousand that we were planning for. And the 2016 update for the twenty-year projection is only twenty-five thousand, nine hundred. So, we fall short of our ten-year projection. So, what does that mean in terms of our planning process? All our level of service analysis that we did is not going to change much. It's going to pretty much be the same because our population has not fluctuated. So, we won't be looking at necessarily adding a lot of park facilities. We'll be just trying to manage what we have existing. And so, you know, going back to that land acquisition for future park, if you really think about it, there are some moving pieces within the city that we still need parkland for, not necessarily to expand our facilities, but to relocate some of our facilities. So, we have, you know, the discussion that's going on about Fort Nugent Park and how twenty acres of that belongs to the school district. We'll have to, if they want to move on that, we have to relocate our existing facilities there. There's the ball fields down here at Winjema Park. Need to relocate those facilities there. So, we still need land, not necessarily to expand, but to just accommodate what we have. So, so those will still be, so land acquisition is still important, but our requirements for these facilities have not, will not increase necessarily. So, I wanted to finish with that, just to give you a heads up. When we bring the document forward, most of our level of service analysis won't change. It'll be the same. We'll point that out as we move forward and we'll come forward in the meeting, either at the next meeting or the meeting in April, about what we want to accomplish in the next six years. And that'll be an interesting discussion moving forward. So, stay tuned. If you have any questions regarding any of the information that I presented, be happy to answer them. Any comments, thoughts? All right, we'll see you soon.
Thank you, Kec. The next item on the agenda this evening is the 2017 Planning Commission NO report to City Council. Steve Powers will help us with this or present what we will be presenting.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Following the format that we developed a few years ago, your annual report is presented to you. At this meeting's, or this evening's agenda for your forwarding on to the City Council, we've used the same approach that we've used in years past in terms of laying out that information. There are really four sections. One is accomplishments, the second is your work program that we can foresee right now in 2018. Thirdly, a section set aside for you if you have any recommendations that you wish to make to the City Council. And fourth, really the actions and details from what you did in 2017. One of the things I do like to spend a little bit of time on is to remind you, as well as remind the public, of all of the work that you accomplished on their behalf and on behalf of the council in 2017 or in the previous year. So, in this last year, you helped us coordinate and collaborate with Island County on the countywide planning policies. A very significant undertaking. You obviously tackled the things that you normally tackle on an annual basis, like the six-year tip and the six-year capital improvement plan. And those don't sound very exciting, I know, but as you well know, they are the basis for, in the case of the tip, they're the basis for us having access to federal funding for street projects. And so, that's no small task there on your efforts. You also then, of course, as Kec had talked about briefly, helped us with the 2017 Annual Comprehensive Plan Amendments. You tackled a number of code amendments. One was related to some work that we did in 2016 on the comprehensive plan. We modified our code with respect to rezoning and helped us line up that new process and the relationship between our comprehensive plan and our zoning map and how we go about potentially rezoning property in a much more efficient manner. Speaking of efficiencies, you looked at the variance sections of our code with respect in particular to Gary Oak trees and how might we be more efficient in protecting that important resource to the community by removing what appeared to have been an arbitrary setback requirement that was not allowing us to take into context the particular site design as well as the location of an oak tree? And so, that was very beneficial. One of the more significant codes that you sent forward to the council was the temporary sign code. As I know that you will recall, there were some significant constitutional challenges to temporary sign codes all across the nation. It was a very complex topic with Ray's leadership and guidance on his project. You helped us sort out those details and send forward a very unique and special code, we think is very noteworthy. Critical areas, you did a lot of work on the critical areas code. You saw from your packet that that's still not adopted at the council level. We've got some issues that we're still working through with them on buffers for wetlands, but you did a lot of fine work on sending that code forward. And then finally, a little bit of a code amendment that deals with the makeup of your very own body and recommending to the council that, that we have some flexibility in the members that might be appointed to serve alongside of you. The proposed work program, page forty-six of your packet for 2018, obviously, that's what we can see right now. And certainly, there will be other items added to this as the year goes on. One of the things I'd like to draw your attention to is the very last item, which is the Affordable Housing Task Force recommendations. You'll notice that we've colored in all of the squares from February all the way through December on that. That's because, as you, as you know and as you'll hear, I think on the next item, there were forty recommendations, I believe, which were made from the task force. While I won't stand here and say that we'll get through all forty of those between now and the end of the year, I think the message is clear, which is that we intend to be tackling those with your help pretty much from now until the end of the year. There's a bit of a description for each of those items as we understand them right now. Then, section three, we would await any input that you might have in terms of sending a special message forward to the council. And then finally, section four gave you all of the details on those items that I just mentioned. So, on behalf of the staff, and I think I can say on behalf of the mayor and council, I want to thank you for your efforts this past year and look forward to working with you in the coming year. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have or take any input on the contents of this report.
I would just like to sit there and say, I read through the report and stuff and I thought it was very well detailed. And as always, I'd like to sit there and tell the staff, thanks very much for all of their input and your input to us on helping us make our decisions and especially with listening to us sometimes when we're rambling, trying to form a question. But anyway, I would just like to say thanks and it was very well done.
Thank you very much for that nice compliment.
I'll ask the one question. Would this be an opportune time to discuss like Hal's comment regarding the makeup of commissions as part of this report?
You know, I think that, that you could certainly do that. Section three is in fact Planning Commission's general recommendations to the City Councils. And so, if that's something that you as a body would like to capture, we'd be happy to help you with that and put that in here. If that's not what you want to do, then, then we can do that in another fashion.
If that's...
Yeah, I don't feel strongly about it.
No? Okay. We'll just leave that alone then, I guess.
Okay.
Again, I want to express my appreciation to staff and a lot of, especially with that sign code ordinance. And you know, again, I do a lot of homework like Hal does, not, we all don't, but we did. You'd be surprised how many cities have not done anything. They're just not enforcing their sign code. Big cities. And even Gilbert, Arizona, you know. Who started this mess?
The culprit city still has not, has not changed their code.
Yeah. But thank the staff, you know, for all their, their hard work in providing us the tools to make rational decisions.
Thank you again for that nice compliment.
Maybe we're going to be talking about this anyway in 2018 since we are including the housing element now on the docket. But, you know, we've kind of talked for, all the time I've been on the Planning Commission about infill building and the shortage of housing, affordable housing and expanded that into the buildable lands analysis question. One of the things that we haven't really gotten down into the weeds on yet is what are the barriers preventing infill development? Why is that not happening? And maybe that's already going to be part of the discussion since we have the housing element on there. What is your thought on that?
Well, I think, in all honesty, I don't think at the staff level we've talked in detail yet about how we envision that housing element conversation going. I would expect that that would be part of it because as you well know, as the rest of the commission knows, a big part of the capacity that we know that we have requires us to, to have at least moderate success with infill development. And so, maybe we'll make sure, well, not maybe, we will make sure that that's a topic of conversation when we get to that item.
Thank you.
Thank you, Al. Anything else?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. The last item on the agenda this evening is the accessory, accessory dwelling units ordinance. Associate Planner, Ray Lindenberg will help us through this.
Thank you. Ray Lindenberg, Associate Planner. Going to talk to you about accessory dwelling units today. So, just a little background on this. I'm sure everybody's aware, but we did go through the Island County City of Oak Harbor Affordable Housing Task Force and they gave us forty recommendations last summer with the goal of facilitating construction of affordable housing units in both Island County and in the city. One of those forty recommendations is directed towards the City of Oak Harbor regarding our accessory dwelling unit ordinance and some of the things that we might be able to do to encourage development of accessory dwelling units. Currently, our ADU ordinance is in OHMC 1942. The, the specific comments from the, from the Housing Task Force were to make an immediate change to the ordinance to eliminate barriers and encourage ADUs. And they had two key things on there. One was eliminate occupancy restrictions and no added parking requirements. And what that refers to is right now, if you have an ADU, you're required to include an extra additional parking space. A single-family unit has to have two parking spaces and then on top of that, your ADU would require another one for a total of three. So, the occupancy restriction is referring to 1942-030, number five, which requires that the property owner shall occupy the, either the principal unit or the accessory dwelling unit as their permanent residence for more than six months out of each year, pretty much stating that the person who owns the property has to live there as their primary residence for at least half the year. And then again, as I mentioned, an additional parking space required for each ADU. Staff recently had an opportunity to network with other communities at a planner's forum and discuss some of the other cities in the area and their ADU ordinances and what, what their experiences have been as far as revising those and encouraging the development of ADUs. We view this as an opportunity to polish our existing code. We looked at it, we looked at the existing code and determined that this is probably not a situation where we need to just scrap it and start from scratch. So, we're going to work on polishing this one to make it a little bit better. And then staff is making this presentation today with the hope of soliciting ideas and comments. So, again, back and forth conversation. I encourage you to jump in at any point that you need to. So, this is our existing code, 1942. And I've highlighted a few sections in there and you don't have to read through it because I'm going to kind of talk about it a little bit, each of those highlighted areas. The first portion there is the purpose and intent. Each of the different code sections generally have a purpose statement. And the purpose statement here talks about adding affordable units to the existing housing stock of the city, developing housing units in single-family neighborhoods that are appropriate for people of various stages of, in the life cycle, and providing homeowners with a means of obtaining additional rental income companionship security, and then also protecting the neighborhood stability, property values, and single-family residential appearance of existing neighborhoods. So, all of these things are fairly typical when we talk about ADUs and what, what ADU ordinances are trying to accomplish. So, this is all fairly typical language and we don't really see a need to change that. We feel that all of these statements are still true from when they were put into the code many years ago. So, we don't feel that there's too much desire to change that. Moving on into the standards and criteria, this is where the meat and potatoes are and this is where some of the changes that we might be looking at. The first one talks about design and scale of the accessory dwelling and it needs to comply with all applicable standards in building, plumbing, electrical, mechanical, fire, and health, and any other applicable, applicable codes. Now, that's a mouthful. And then it goes on and talks about some other, you know, situations where these things might be varied from. The problem with this statement is the building code is very specific and we can't vary from that. So, that's going to be one of those. I think we're going to remove some of that kind of ambiguous language, pull that out of there because it, it makes it problematic for us to be able to interpret certain, certain criteria in there and we need to be able to have black and white in that situation. The second one there, it talks about any additions to the existing building should not exceed the allowable lot coverage or encroach into the required setbacks. This is key. Our ADU ordinance does not set a maximum size for an ADU. You could have a three thousand square foot accessory dwelling unit if you could fit it in to what that code says. And that's saying that you have to meet the standards there set forth for lot coverage and setbacks. And that's, that's something key there because what we found when we went to our planner's forum is a lot of cities limit the size of your ADU. They say it either has to be one or two bedrooms or a certain square footage or something along those lines. This code already doesn't do that. So, we feel that that allows a lot of freedom already and something that maybe other ordinances haven't allowed in other cities. Number five there, this is one of the key things that came from the task force, the property owner needing to live on-site. That's something that we're going to discuss and I'd like to hear from the Planning Commission as far as what your thoughts are on that, how strongly you agree or disagree with that statement. And that's something that, that we need to know because that was something that the, the task force gave us specifically to look into. One thing, it is important to note that a lot of other cities has, have that. One thing, it is important to note that a lot of other cities has, have that statement or a similar type statement in their code, that they want to have the, the property owner onsite for a lot of cities. Going on to number eight and number nine, talks about some kind of design issues. And again, that's one of those things that we'll know it when we see it. One of the, the statements there is that the primary access to the accessory dwelling needs to be located in a manner that's unobtrusive from the same view of the building, which encompasses the entrance to the principal unit. Well, what does that mean? That's, that's kind of ambiguous and it also creates, creates a problem for emergency services. If you get 911 call from unit B of whatever address and they can't find the entrance, that's a problem. And we understand that there is reasoning behind that, you don't want to have the duplex appearance on a house. Well, is that really a problem? Or does the overriding concern of safety, you know, trump that? So, that's something that we need to look at. Going on to the next one, the basis for denial section talks about a judgment call of visual impact. We need to get a standard for that. That, that's really wishy-washy and it, it's concerning to us. There needs to be standards for that and so that's something that we'll be looking into. And then also going back to the, the Affordable Housing Task Force thing, there's the requirement there, number two, that talks about a covenant that is recorded, that goes along with the property that says that the property owner is going to live there. And one of the thoughts of the Affordable Housing Task Force is that that's causing a situation where people are, don't want to deal with that because it sounds very onerous. So, that's something that we're going to be looking into. And as I go into my presentation a little bit further, we'll talk about some pros and cons with these things. And then going to, let's see here. Going to 1942-060, there's some language in there, it talks about conditional use permit. Well, we don't require conditional use permit. This is going to be a housekeeping item, that's just going to be deleted. So, just to kind of give you an idea of what it is we're dealing with here, it's just kind of some polishing, some adding of details, some removal of some ambiguous types of statements, trying to get to a point where not only is it a better code, but it's a more understandable code for people to relate to. If anybody's interested in doing an ADU, they can read it and see that it's fairly straightforward because it's always been there as an option for people. But there's, I think, been this conception that it's difficult or that there's too many requirements that go along with it and things like that. So, key points of our code here, number eight on the list is directed at the city. This is, these are the two key points that we just talked about a little while ago, eliminating occupancy restrictions and, and added parking requirements. Now, eliminating residency restrictions, we talked about some pros and cons here. The pros of that, if you get rid of that residency restriction, is it reduces a psychological barrier, barrier to the ADU construction for property owners. It says to them, hey, this is easy, this is not something you have to go sign your life away for. Makes it a little bit easier for people to, to comprehend that and to think, to think about it. It would speed the processing of the ADU permit and reduce the enforcement and verification by staff. And it would allow for rental of property as a package deal. So, what you could do is you could rent out your entire, your entire property, would have a main house and an ADU unit on it. And perhaps the renters want to use the main house for the family and the accessory dwelling unit for their teenage kid. Or maybe they want to rent it out to, to a sublease and that's fine. And if they want to do that, it extends the benefit of the ADU to that renter instead of just keeping it for a property owner. Now, some of the cons to eliminating the residency restrictions is it can create less oversight within a neighborhood with regard to problem renters. If you have a situation where there's a problem renter in an ADU, it could more easily be handled by a property owner who lives onsite. Future property owners might not be familiar with regulations because there's nothing that goes along with the property when it's sold. That covenant gets recorded. So, if there's a covenant on the property, whoever the new buyer is of a new, of a property would see that on there and they would understand exactly what needs to happen with that ADU. And then the last one, enforcement might be problematic if owners, if owners of property are difficult to reach. So, those are some issues that might come up with eliminating that, that residency restriction. Other considerations, does this requirement create a barrier to ADU construction? Is this what is causing few ADUs to be built? We, we haven't heard hardly any that I know of. I know we haven't had, done any in almost four years that I've been here and they're pretty rare in general. Other cities have similar requirements requiring the residency of the property owner on the property. And finally, residents and neighborhoods have not weighed in on this condition. We've got the recommendation of the Affordable Housing Task Force and they say you should get rid of this. We haven't heard the other side because it really hasn't been out there yet. It hasn't been advertised, you know, as something that might be coming to your neighborhood. So, we don't really have that other side of, of the, the argument, if you will, the other side of what people might be thinking about that. Now, for parking requirements, the recommendation from the Affordable Task, the Affordable Housing Task Force was to not require additional parking for an ADU. Now, the pros for that, reduce parking will be a better fit with our low-impact development requirements. You'll have less pavement. It may reduce the overall cost of adding an ADU. If you don't already have that additional parking, the cost of building a new parking space can be substantial. And it can reduce the appearance of a parking lot at the street frontage. If you have three cars spread across your narrow lot, that can look like a parking lot. So, that might be able to reduce some of that appearance. The cons of removing the parking requirement, all residential units are required to provide parking. And if we were to change this, then ADUs wouldn't be and they would be kind of set aside as being different than, than a typical residential unit. It could create over, an overflow parking situation on the street. And additional pavement is counter to new LID requirements, as I mentioned previously. Other considerations there, one of the cheapest places to add square footage is in a garage conversion. So, if you had two parking spaces in your single-family home and you put your ADU in there, then you're removing those two parking spaces. So, you're creating a parking crunch doubly if you remove your existing parking spaces and don't provide any new. So, that could be a problem as well. So, I'm asking the Planning Commission now if there are any concerns or thoughts that come up from this. We are going to be presenting this to the city council as well as a, a similar type discussion item. And we're trying to get, get ahead of it as far as if there are any concerns or any thoughts that are floating around as far as removing restrictions, adding restrictions, how we want to go about this.
I don't, me personally, I sit there and I think that the owner should be present on the property for six months out of the year because otherwise, all you're doing, you can create multiple rental programs and if somebody sublets to somebody else who's already renting, are they really responsible for that renter if a legal action has to be taken? Whereas the homeowner or the property owner is ultimately responsible for. So, he may be getting into something that he's not even aware of because he didn't have it in his contract, you know, with the renter saying, you will do this here and you cannot sublet, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And so, me personally, six months, the owner should be on property. And as far as the, not having additional parking on the property and stuff like that, you, he had to do a lot of stuff, but under the same aspect, there's one important thing you didn't cover. One things we're doing now is we're narrowing the streets in all the residential areas. Well, if you get more cars in the residential areas, what problems are we going to have for people driving through there? Okay, also you have a turnaround inside there, like on a place. We get more cars in there on that turnaround place, what about our fire trucks? Therefore, if somebody has a trailer, truck and trailer and stuff like that, boat and stuff they're parking out in the street, well, an emergency happens, a fire truck goes into there and turn around because they need to get on the other side or, you know, they're just doing their daily drive-through the areas. What hazards are we causing for them because they can't turn around? So, now they have to back up. And we get more people inside of these housing areas and stuff like that, well, there's going to be more kids playing. So, what are we looking at as far as kids playing in these areas and possibly getting hurt, hit by cars and again, the fire truck, emergency vehicles that are going in and out of there? That's some things I think we need to really look at very closely.
How do you feel, sorry?
Mentioned to the chairman that you do have two members of the Affordable Housing Task Force here who may also might want to offer comments at an appropriate time.
How do you feel about the, the requirement for a covenant that, that's recorded? And that's, that's one of the things right now that I think we're struggling with a little bit as staff is that we have this requirement in there, the covenant be recorded that goes with the property. And the, the thought on that is, yes, that is a good notification, you know, kind of holding the existing owner responsible and saying, look, you need to abide by this, but it also passes on that responsibility to future owners. At the same time, if that is some sort of psychological barrier, the removal of that might not be a huge deal because if there are problems in the future, then that can be an enforcement-type situation. So, I'd be interested to know what the members of the commission feel about that as well. Because that's one that we're really kind of struggling with as far as whether or not it, it should remain there because if you take that out, the, the, if you take out the covenant but leave the requirement that the owner stay there, you, you're still accomplishing the same thing, just in a slightly, you know, the enforcement would happen in a different way.
I think the covenant should still be there and not like in regulations, but I, I, I hate to say it, that's one that I think should be there.
Okay.
So, when the home is sold, the future buyers would know about it.
I've got a, a couple of questions about, in general, what an accessory dwelling unit is going to be. You mentioned it towards the beginning, talking about the building codes and that right now, any accessory dwelling unit has to meet building codes. There's been talk about allowing tiny homes, which generally speaking, don't meet typical building codes. You know, they're, they generally meet RV codes.
Right.
Are tiny homes going to be allowed to be an ADU? Are, are we going to have a big rush towards, you know, buying one of these tiny homes that you see out on the highway for sale and plop down people's backyards and then now they say they have an ADU? And I don't have a problem with that necessarily, but I'm just wondering what the intent is. You know, I, I see a lot of these ADUs in some areas turning into VRBOs.
Right.
Which is not necessarily a bad thing because it takes the pressure off of other properties that may be VRBOs when they don't really need that much space. But I don't see them necessarily as a solution for affordable housing either because generally speaking, a tiny home isn't going to be something that a family of four or even a family of two is probably going to live in year-round. So, I guess my first question is regarding building codes. Is this something where you see us allowing tiny homes? I mean, are people going to turn their garden sheds into ADUs? I'm, that's a serious question.
Yeah, no, I, I, I agree with that. The, the, the general public view of tiny homes is what you kind of get on, on the TV shows, on HGTV. They have wheels, they're not built to building codes, you know, et cetera. What our code says now is it has to be built to building codes. So, I would say just based on that, that, that a tiny home on wheels, quote unquote, is set aside from that. It's not permitted as an ADU. If somebody wants to live in one, they, they need to find a different path to get there essentially. As far as, as having an ADU in a garden shed, if somebody can show that that garden shed was built to code, that meets the building codes, that meets our zoning codes and they want to, to live in it or rent it out or whatever, then that is a possibility. And the thing is about the building code is the building code and our zoning code both do not have a minimum square footage for a quote "house." They have minimum sizes for kitchens, minimum sizes for what space you have to have in your bathroom around your toilet and a minimum size for a sleeping area. Beyond that, you know, if you can fit all that to 100 square feet, by all means, go for it, you know. And if you want to live there, by all means also. But that, that could create a legitimate ADU. Whereas, you know, if you have a 200 square foot tiny home that's trailer, that doesn't, even though it might be larger. So, there's, there's the cutoff there and the cutoff is, is does it meet our building code? Does it meet the building code? Can it be placed according to our zoning ordinance? That's the cutoff. And I think that is an important distinction, especially when you're talking about creating affordable housing and creating new housing units, is do we want to have people in building code approvable buildings? Or do we want to have people living in trailers in somebody's backyard that's parked on blocks? And that's kind of an important distinction.
And that's my concern, you know, on the one hand, you know, they have this thing called a park model RV, which, you know, they're typically around 400 square feet or so. They would be perfectly adequate ADUs, but my understanding right now is they wouldn't qualify because they don't meet residential building requirements.
That's true, yeah.
And I thought it was in the Affordable Task Force recommendations that one of them is to consider allowing tiny homes.
It did and, and the, the way it was written on there, I understand there's also a distinction there. It was, one of the things was to remove minimum square footage requirements and that's why I wanted to make it perfectly clear that there are none. The, the distinction is the building code requirement. And I think that is an important distinction. You know, if you have a tiny home that's built to RV standards, is that appropriate for full-time living? Or is that appropriate for living in it as if it were an RV? So, there's, there's that distinction there and, you know, at some point, we are going to have to determine if we want to, you know, allow for, for RVs, park models, tiny homes, et cetera, to be considered as ADUs. And maybe that time is now to put into the ADU ordinance or maybe it's, it's a later date to talk about tiny homes and things like that. But that is, that is an important discussion that we need to have at some point.
And so, back to my other point, which is about things like VRBOs, you know, vacation residences, short-term rentals, those kind of things. You know, I, I came from a tourist community where our population doubled or even tripled during certain weekends in the summertime and parking was always a nightmare. And I'm concerned when you have a property and you don't have any parking requirements for it, if in fact these places become VRBOs or some kind of short-term rentals or even long-term rentals for that matter, they've got cars. You know, we've got a lot of homes on big lots in some of the older part of towns particularly that would be ideal for an ADU. But they had, were built with one-car garages, they got a one-car wide driveway, they're already parking on the street or in the front yard. And yeah, you may not want to have a front yard that's all paved parking, but, you know, as you said, you're just moving the cars from the driveway out to the street if you don't require some kind of parking. So, I'm a little bit reluctant to just say it's okay to waive or not to have added requirements for parking.
I think staff tends to agree with that assessment, that, that, that could be a definite problem because, you know, if you have, say, for instance, a 400 square foot ADU that's maybe a one or two bedroom, you might have two cars in that ADU plus however many cars you have in the house. You start to get pretty close to having a real problem at that point.
Well, the other issue is, you know, I have a really big lot. I've got room to build a 4,000 square foot ADU on my property if I wanted to and I'm not going to require any additional parking.
Yeah, that's a very good point, yeah.
Well, this conversation is what brought me to this position to start off with several years ago. And everything that I brought forward to the commission at that time has borne fruit. The units were built, fortunately, there was only four of them. And some of these houses now have nine cars. And the only people that park in driveway are the owners whereby, we're talking about ownership requirement to be there. Because the R1 zoning allows for the accessory dwelling unit on the property already, a lot of people were not aware of it, including me. But the mere fact that the parking, if you look at the streets within this development, you'll see where this accumulation of ADUs and the impact it's had on the neighborhood exists because it's curb to curb, block to block of nothing but cars. And then they bring in their boats and then they bring in their trailers, just for a short period of time, but there's literally no place to park. And so, that's my issue with the onsite parking. I think there should be onsite parking required, at least one space, you know. The covenant, I would want... The covenant, I would want to know if someone's planning on doing that to the house next door. I would want to know if I'm looking at a house where this is allowed, that's going to tell me, well, if it's allowed here, it's allowed next door, and is that going to impact me now or in the future? Is it going to impact the neighborhood? And also, how does it impact HOAs? Because the city's doing this and allowing it, does that supersede the covenants?
No, it would not. Anytime you have the CCNRs, it's one of those kind of sticky legal situations that essentially the CCNR is a contract between the property owner and HOA. So we could theoretically allow somebody to do it, but then they get sued by their HOA. So we would generally just not allow it because that's just going to create issues. So in places where there are CCNRs or HOAs that don't allow for that, we would generally not allow an ADU to be constructed. So it's one of those kind of areas where we don't really step into as far as illegal because it's not, we're not a party to it essentially, but we would advise the property owner that that wouldn't be allowed.
This, this task force, this... Are they also looking at changing the zoning code?
In what respect, Mr. Freeman?
Which could impact the building code as well. I'm talking about site setbacks, you know, side yards. Are they looking to change that as well? Or is that possible?
I don't remember any specific recommendations about setbacks and lot coverage. There was a wide range of recommendations that came from the task force, some of which are of this nature. Some might deal with the requirement to keep, not have ground floor residential in certain commercial districts, to adopting provisions out of the state law that provide greater incentives for affordable housing. The recommendations really run the gamut, run the spectrum, but I don't recall any specific recommendations about specific zoning districts and setbacks, but we'll be happy to check that.
Because I know some of the things that I've seen, and I'm going to talk about off island, it's not here, but some of the things that I pay close attention to where King County is a prime example of where this massive change is happening. And residential properties that are decent size are being bought up by developers one piece at a time and they're able to spot zone and go in and all of a sudden, four properties that were single-family houses with detached garages are now a three-story apartment complex or condos and no onsite parking. That's kind of the biggest fear I have of the ADU concept is something like that happening. Now, if it works, it works down in King County because of their transit system, but we don't have that type of a transit system that allows that. And again, it comes right back to the parking, it comes back to the shopping, and how do people get from point A to point B if we don't have the transit system there for it? Or there's no place for them to park? And how does it impact the neighborhoods that are existing?
And I think that's a very legitimate concern, and I think the thing that would hopefully alleviate your concern a little bit is when we're talking about ADUs, we're not talking about, you know, building large condos and large buildings like that. What we are talking about is maybe adding on to an existing single-family house another unit. So, you know, it's 400, 600 square feet, something like that, or it's a detached structure in the backyard that's located, you know, away from the street, et cetera. But the key thing to remember here is, and it says right in the code, is that you still have to meet the setbacks there in the zone district, you still have to be under the site coverage there in the zone district. So those things are already there, and I don't see a reason to change that at this point because, you know, we already have the maximum lot coverage. So if your house is already big enough that you're right up at that maximum lot coverage, well, you're not going to be able to do an ADU unless you build up. And the thing is, number one, is I don't know that the demand is here, that people are going to start doing a lot of that. And number two, that's really expensive. So the return just might not be there.
Well, I'm just thinking long-term is what I'm thinking. You know, not 10 or 15 years, but I've seen, in my long years, I've seen the same concept come in one way and it turns up to be something completely different. And not what you envisioned or even what the task force envisioned. They're looking, they're looking for square footage to put people in.
Yeah.
Okay, and they're not necessarily looking, you know, at the ramifications on a particular area. I know we have a lot of infill properties that have been identified, but could probably, you know, the family or their kids have to sell the property at some point in time because the existing generation, the existing owners have the lot because that's what they bought. It might have been five acres, it might have been two acres. But now people are usually living closer and building smaller, and, you know, hurrah for that. I mean, that's, that's good, but how does it impact the overall livability of the city?
Sure.
Okay. That's my big concern and, you know, pay close attention to it.
Yeah, I think that the unintended consequences of changing the codes, you know, need to be thought through to a certain extent, as much as they can be. You know, again, we generally think of an ADU as a fairly small building, but, you know, somebody who is a little devious could figure out a way to build an additional single-family house on their property and rent it out, you know, for a pretty price. And essentially, what they've done is bypassed the whole process that you would normally go through to, you know, short-plot your property and then make it a second parcel with a house on it. So, you know, are we going to require separate sewer hookups, separate water hookups, all those kind of things? Is that all going to be part of this consideration?
It can be.
I don't know what ADUs currently require.
Yeah, it doesn't address it specifically in the codes. That would be a building code question, honestly.
I've seen a lot of this as well. I mean, these are probably, I'm one of the people that had this. I had a granny unit on my property for my mother-in-law, you know, and the code allowed for that, and it worked out fine for me and my mother-in-law when we were there because we could cohabitate. You know, she had her space and I had my space. But then I sold the house. And I didn't think long-term. And that long-term now is where in order to access that living room, hallway, bedroom, and bathroom, and using the kitchen in the house, they have now knocked out a window and put in an entry door. They have four cars, okay, and they're all parked on the street. Now, it's not that I did, I mean, I started the ball rolling, but that's, that's what I see as far as long-term, and it just, that's just what happened. And that's a concern that I think we need to be aware of, you know, in going down this path.
Yeah, I'm generally, you know, very supportive of the idea of expanding the ability to have ADUs on a property. I just want to make sure we think it through.
Yeah.
Thank you.
At this time, I think maybe we'll entertain the folks in the audience that'd like to come up to the podium and share what they might consider alternatives, concerns.
Mr. Chairman, good evening. My name is Bill Massey, and I had the pleasure of serving on the task force that was formed by our Island County Commissioner and Mayor Severance. And it was a long process. We considered a lot of different things besides ADUs, but ADUs were a hot topic of discussion for good reason. And just to address a couple of things that were brought up tonight, one of the, part of our discussion included parking, and a significant amount of our discussion included concerns about parking. And we looked at areas of Oak Harbor, particularly the older areas of Oak Harbor that have 60-foot streets, and in those areas, the street parking is maybe 50% used. So we would hope that you would look at this particular aspect of the ordinance relative to those areas where street parking would accommodate additional parking. So that if you had a restrictive street situation, you'd have to provide additional onsite parking. If there was more than adequate street parking, because we have a 60-foot right-of-way, for example, that's very little used, then in that case, no street parking would be required. So that was part of the discussion that occurred on the task force. We were tasked to have an open mind, look at all kinds of alternatives, find ways to create affordable housing. This is just one. As a result of our current ordinance, we have ADUs here and there throughout Oak Harbor, but they're typically not legal. And folks have created these as a result of their concern, I think, about the fact that we have restrictions relative to owner occupancy. If we're looking to create affordable housing, the owner occupancy requirement is going to continue to restrict the development of ADUs. I think that it was a consensus of the task force that this particular element would be, was not going to be a huge benefit to affordable housing, but over time, it will create another option, and maybe we get 50 units over the next 10 years or so of ADUs or some number like that. It's not going to be a huge number, but every little incremental number is an assistance toward more affordable housing. I hope you'll keep an open mind in the discussion and look at things like manufactured units that meet the building code. They might be the RVs thing that you've mentioned because the park models now are, if I understand correctly, can be obtained that meet the uniform building code. There's also manufactured units that meet the, meet the building code. Folks can create affordable units out of their garages, which I know, again, creates a parking issue that you're concerned about. They can create ADUs in basement situations, and that's occurred in a number of neighborhoods in Oak Harbor already. Probably similar to what you discussed that you created. I'm glad you created an ADU, created some affordable housing in Oak Harbor. Was it Oak Harbor? Not good. I'd like you also to look at the restriction on setbacks. I believe in Oak Harbor, we're allowed a variance for setbacks for storied sheds and garages. Why should that be and not be allowed for ADUs? I think that the park model RV concept, again, if it meets the building code, should be considered so long as it architecturally fits the neighborhood. In other words, it should look like a small house or be compatible with the house that it's attached to. I also think that, and it was the consensus of our, of our group, that the 40% total lot coverage might be too restrictive. So I hope you'll at least consider that. I think that's about it. I think that the task force is hopeful that City of Oak Harbor will do as we were tasked to do and that think outside the box and look at, look at the, all of the options. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Massey.
Hello, I'm Rick Chapman. Also had the pleasure of serving on the Housing Task Force. Thank you, Jill, and Mayor Bob, wherever you are. What we're talking about is probably a small percentage of developments in Oak Harbor because pretty much anything that got developed from the 70s on has covenants that say you can only have one single-family residence on the lot. So you're really not, you've taken out pretty much the whole west side of town and the northeast part of town. So you're talking about, you know, Whidbe Avenue, south on kind of both sides of the midway. So I don't think you're talking about a huge area, and I think that, I think that your comment about the owners, that they should be here, I don't, I don't agree with that. We, my real estate office, we handle several hundred rentals, and I can tell you, those owners, hardly any of them live here. And things work out just fine. What about the Navy guy who has a house and he gets transferred? Are you going to make him sell his house when he doesn't want to? You got to consider that. I don't, I don't think it's, it doesn't matter if the people live there or not. I can drive you around town, I can show you a whole bunch of rentals where there's 10 people living in a three-bedroom house and they're destroying the house, and the guy lives somewhere else and he really doesn't care. That happens. We can't do much about that. Hal, you know that. There's nothing you can do about it. You can ticket them, you can write them a letter. That's it. So I think that you need to consider, and like Bill said, the pre-made units, the park models, and the pre-made tiny homes, they are built to a pretty good code. I actually went out and looked at several of them. I don't know if you guys have looked at them or not. You should go look. They're already built, you can move them into the yard, you can set them down on a foundation, and you've got something done. And it's done well and done right. And it becomes affordable housing. Because that is a real problem that we have in this town is affordable housing. I don't even know if you can rent a one-bedroom apartment for under $900 or $1,000 anymore. So I hope that you consider this. I hope you look at the setbacks, consider having an ADU, have the same setbacks as a garage or a shed. I think that's about all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Appreciate your comments.
Hi, Jill Johnson. I'm backing up my team. They worked for about six to nine months on making these recommendations for affordable housing. I think, though, that there are some things, I was on the Planning Commission when we had a conversation about ADUs, and there was a lot of concerns about parking. I think that every time there's a conversation about anything in Oak Harbor, people are concerned about parking. Here's the thing, in other communities, people use these things called feet and they walk. And we are a little bit obsessed with parking, to the point where it's really becoming a barrier for business, it's becoming a barrier for affordable housing, it's becoming a barrier in general. And I think what part of it is, is we make an assumption that every person who's accessing something is just like us, right? But that's not necessarily true. So why am I interested in ADUs? I have a niece who's developmentally delayed. I will be raising her when my parents cannot. Our future plan is to have her in an auxiliary dwelling unit on our property, and we will have care, take her, live with her. She doesn't need a parking spot. She's not going to drive. But that is an option that we need as a family in order to ensure that we have an appropriate lifestyle for her. The other group of people, and I'm at a benefit because we talk about this at the county all the time, what some of the challenges are, aging population. They need to be in a location where they have supports near them, but they still want independence. We're talking about people who probably aren't going to drive in those situations. VRBOs, I understand the concern of, but the assumption there is that it's taking away affordable housing and not a reverse thought, which is it's making the primary house affordable. So if your sewer rate goes up, I don't know, $100 a month, let's say, you've got to figure out a way to make that money back, right? So what can you do? You have an opportunity to rent something out. Maybe that person's not there permanently. Maybe it's a parking challenge on weekends. But what you've done is created an economic opportunity for someone to make the primary home that they live in affordable. There's a lot of ways to look at it. Renters, I understand, but you can't tell in this room who rents and who doesn't. I, just so you know, my husband and I rent the house that we're in right now, and we rent out the house that we own. We wanted more space. I'm pretty sure I'm not a deadbeat, most of the time. I'm not going to guarantee it all of the time. But, you know, renters are just people who choose not to own a home that they're in. The other thing is, is just because somebody lives in an auxiliary dwelling unit, maybe it's because their income isn't high enough to afford something else. But those income requirements could be your bank teller, it could be a first-year teacher, it could be a guy who's out serving our country who says, look, I'm willing to live in this small place because I'm not here that much and I want to make sure my stereo's secure, so I want to live in somebody's backyard, right? Those are just members of our community. And so just shifting that paradigm of how we're thinking about who these residents are and what the consequences could be. Culturally in this community, we have a lot of individuals who choose to live multi-generationally. It's really common in some cultures. You put three generations in a home, you got three sets of cars out there. I have some neighbors who like to park everything that they own, even the things that don't run, right, in their yard. And then also, they don't utilize their garage, not because it's an ADU, but because it seems to be the storage unit. So you start to think about these things, they're happening in daily life right now with owners and renters. Some of it is fear of what we don't understand. Some of it is natural bias we go into conversations with. But some of the concerns that we have are happening in primary residents right now. I don't think very many people will do this. I do think it's an opportunity for some people that they should have for economic reasons and lifestyle reasons. And then, I made notes, so I don't want And then, I made notes, so I don't want to sit down till I get them all in here. I might also have to throw Dave and Arlene in one of these, and so what do you want to do? Put them on the streets, people? Those are my parents. You never know. So I think that those are the things I really wanted to emphasize is, I've changed my opinion on this as I've learned more about how they can be utilized, the designs that are out there. Oh, and then the other thing is, is that, look, this is a harsh reality. And now I'll switch from a citizen and a task force person to a county commissioner for a moment. The City of Oak Harbor isn't going to be able to expand until it demonstrates that it's taken every single step it can to increase density in its urban area. It's a fact. It's a state law fact. And so some of these things, just giving opportunities, even if people don't take them, are clear indicators to regulators that steps are being taken to increase density in an area. So if growth isn't, is a value, finding ways to demonstrate that you've tried to infill the best you can, well, that would be something that you might want to consider valuing. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson-Piper, for your comments. Is there any other folks that would like to share anything at this time? Commissioners, any further comments?
I want to make one, one comment regarding the, a couple times brought up, the, the setbacks for accessory buildings and ADUs. If your accessory building or your accessory dwelling unit is less than 600 square feet, you can have the reduced setbacks. And our code says that the side and rear setback for an accessory building slash ADU can be within five feet of the property line. Within five feet. What does that mean? The interpretation has been variously either five feet or within five feet, meaning zero. So that's something that we're going to be looking at revising the code to make that perfectly clear what the setback is. But in any case, if your accessory building, including an ADU, is less than 600 square feet and two stories, it can be in the rear yard pretty close to the property lines. So that's one thing I wanted to point out. And then the 40% lot coverage issue, that is in the R1 Zone District. So if that's something we want to look at revising, that's in a different section of the code, and that's certainly something that we can take a look at if there's interest in.
To Mr. Chapman's point, I, I just want to ask him. Have, do we know in the City of Oak Harbor what properties realistically could accommodate these accessory dwellings? Because like, I, I know there's numerous homes that, I mean, the prop, the house on it, that's it, baby. It's got 40%, and there you are.
Right, and well, and the thing is, it, it depends on what your definition of realistically is. Because if you have, if you have a one-story home, and it's covering up that 40%, and it's all to the setbacks, you can still go up, right? So that's, that's the realistic question, and that's where you get, you know, versus affordable dwelling unit versus an accessory dwelling unit. You know, what's affordable, what's just, you know, we want extra space, we want to put, you know, a family member in there, and we have the disposable income to be able to build that, and we're not looking for the additional income, et cetera. So I, I would say to that point that just about every R1-zone property would be possible to build an accessory dwelling unit on. Is it practical, maybe? Is it affordable, maybe? All these other things that go along with that are all maybes. But I would say, you know, pretty clearly that, that most properties, you could do it.
Fair enough. This kind of brings up a question of, you know, we're talking about garage conversions or basement conversions. You know, to me, that doesn't traditionally sound like what an ADU is. An ADU would be a separate structure. But it sounds like we're interpreting garage conversions and basement conversions or building up to be an ADU.
The code does allow for both. And the thing about it is, in my previous jurisdiction, when I worked in Utah, it was a lot of basements. It was a lot of basements because people had to walk out, you know, and they had a separate entrance anyway, so we're not using it, might as well, kind of thing. And so I, I think that basements are less prevalent here, but doing a garage conversion is a very affordable way of increasing square footage, whether it's for your own house or for an ADU. But the code does specifically say that it can be attached or detached, meaning you could build on an attached ADU, you could build a new separate ADU, you could remodel a portion of your existing house. There are many variations to it. As long as you meet that building code and those setback requirements, you know, you can do it.
It, you know, it's been a while since I read it, and I wasn't obviously on the task force, but my understanding is the county code differentiates between guest quarters and a guest house slash ADU. So that's, I guess, part of my confusion, so. That's all I got.
Okay. At this time, I think I'll remind the folks that our next meeting is on, I believe, March 27, 6:00 PM, and may no further business. I call this meeting adjourned.
Great meeting.